It's time for me to call the Board of Education.
Tonight, we have students from Springmore Elementary who are going to help us with the pledge. We have Duvie Mafta, Marvin Garcia, Carson Lookavell, Lucy Merritt, and Kayla Watkins.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hooker and I met with the students before the meeting and we had a good conversation with them and they told us a lot of good things that are going on at Springmore Elementary. I'm gonna let them introduce themselves to you and tell them, tell you what grade they're in and who came with them and then they're gonna tell you a little bit some of those things that they told us about Springmore.
My name is Duvie Mafta, I'm in fifth grade. I'm at Springmore Elementary School. I'm here with my grandmother and I love Springmore School and I'll be sad to see it go.
Sad to see it go.
My name is Marvin Garcia, I'm from Springmore Elementary School. I'm in fourth grade. I love, uh, I love fourth grade. My teacher's nice. I really like, love reading and that's all. Oh, my parents.
My name is Carson Lookavell. I'm in third grade and my mom came with me tonight. I love Springmore and I hope that when I leave, I will always remember it still, I'm a girl. I love Springmore because it has good teachers and I love everything about it.
My name is Lucy Merritt. I'm in second grade and I came here with my mom and my sister. And I love Springmore and I love the teachers.
My name is Kayla Watkins. I'm in first grade. I like sea creatures.
Kayla, you told me, you told me, so I did ask them if there was something about Springmore that they would like to change, what that would be? And Ms. McGill would be glad to know that at first, they all said nothing. They love it just the way it is. But Kayla did have one request and what was that? No, what would you like to change about Springmore? Say it in my ear.
Lunchtime.
But other than that? Yeah, Shugby doesn't like the lunchtime.
My momma, my mommo, and my toffle.
My name is Parker Levin and I'm in kindergarten. And my mom and daddy and my sister came with me and, uh, I'm a senior in school.
And I think Carson wanted to say one more thing about what she would change.
I'd like to change the town. I would like to make school life more fun and education.
Let's give them a hand one more time.
Mr. Chairman, should we have any senior representatives tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I would please begin with senior representatives from five high schools in Cleveland County. I'm asking them to stand up and introduce themselves. Do you want to start?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Valerie Walker and I'm a senior at Brant High School. And my parents are Kenney and Melly. I'm involved in several activities at school, including track and volleyball. And I also started a recycling project at my school. And I'm a part of the interact club. And I applied to a teen college at UNC Asheville and majored in health and wellness and later go into physical therapy.
My name is Brittany Foster. I'm a senior at Brant High School. I'm involved in several activities at school. I'm a part of the men, the women's track and cross-country team, president of the interact club, and president of the community action team which joins with the communities and schools. I tend to go to college at UNC Charlotte and major in, or study pre-med and eventually become an OBGYN.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Ethan Standish and I represent Cleveland County College High School. My parents are Angie Standish and Rob Standish. I'm included, I'm involved in several community activities, including mission trips that go across the country. And the church has a food class and backpack ministry to allow food to be given to the homeless and children in need. And I have a job at Ingalls Home Batteries in Greens. I applied to the college at Lees McRae and then transferred to NC State for pre-med and then full-missionary medicine. And my career goal is to be a vet and don't run businesses.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Arteja Shanice Brooks. I am a senior at Kingsmount High School. My parents are April Lewis Weber and William Scott Brooks. I'm involved in several activities and community activities. I'm involved in theater arts. I'm currently working on the musical production here, Spray. I volunteer at KAM Elite Sports and Enrichment Program. I taught an art and design class. I help with concessions and I help them with banners for their sponsoring their club. I also help build theater sets and I did, over the summer, I did teacher assisting, helping teachers get their classrooms together. I applied to a teen college at North Carolina State University and studied polymer coloration. My career goal is the all-known fashion and cosmetics business.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bishop Polycastro. I'm a senior at Christ High School. My parents are Marion and Phillicia Polycastro. Some of the activities that I'm involved in at school are, I am currently the bather club president and Spanish club. I am founder of the chess club. And I also am currently employed at Chick-fil-A. I'm not sure which college I'm going to attend yet and applied to study medicine, hopefully. And my ultimate career goal is to hopefully become a family physician.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Carrie Barrett. I'm a senior at Christ High School. My parents are Susan Rippey and Dennis Burke. I'm involved in the bather club, Spanish club, and science Olympia. We're also starting up the chess club. I'm gonna join with that. I work on the weekends at KFC. And I plan to attend UNC at Greensboro and study web development. And I also like to continue my Spanish education and possibly minor in Spanish.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Lawson Tony. I'm a senior at Kingsmount High School. My parents are Hope and Barry Tony. I'm involved in several activities, including a bar club. For the past six years, I've worked with Special Olympics or something. I've also given many some clients during my high school career. I'm a year-round competitive swimmer and most recently I became a stationary swimmer in the Henry Bar Rescue. I plan on attending college at Argyle University where I plan on majoring in exercise science and then continuing on to position as a senior quarterback.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ben Gold. I'm a senior at Shelby High School. My parents are Ned and Laura Gold. I'm involved in soccer, baseball, and young life at school. I plan to go to NC State University and study biology and then go to either medical school or physical therapy school.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Tayon Lewis. My parents are Betsy and Charles Lewis. I'm involved in Portugal and the curator and president of it. I'm also a member of the Spanish club and I'm assistant techy at my trade. I also volunteer at nursing home on Sundays. I plan to attend UNC Charlotte. I wanna major in criminal justice, minor in psychology and Spanish, and after that, I wanna become a cop.
Next on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. What's the pleasure, Board? Would the agenda be adopted, Mr. Chairman? Second. They've moved it seconded that we adopt the agenda as we've all had our agenda package for several days now. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass as unanimously. We also want to recognize our other guests here tonight. Do we have anyone? I see a bunch out there, I think. One principal and one assistant principal. Will be able to stand up or just one for all the group? If you don't, I'll make you stand up. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Allen. And thank you, Mr. Holmes. UC Association of Teacher Assistants.
Well, he's the way. Now, I'd like to thank the board for the commitment on our main breakfast that we gave on Monday's Saturday, the field of prayer, and also just a great start for another morning of the day.
Any UCAU representatives?
Chris Glover, Bartott.
Any? Any other elected officials? Thank you all for coming. Next item is approval of three sets of minutes. The first one is minutes of the February 10th called session for accreditation. What's the pleasure, the board?
I'll make a motion we approve the February 10th called session.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Pass as unanimously. I got a little ahead of the game, so we'll revert to, come back in a minute to the others' sessions. We do have a period of public participation, as you all know, which we allocate fifteen minutes to separate three-minute comment sessions from the audience. And tonight, we have three to wish to speak. The first is Sandy Mossdeller. Would she please come forward?
Sandy Mossdeller. I have four children and I live in the youngest. I present here to my family that I love and should read, something that if you don't know, and I would like for you at least to give out a judgment that because I'm also over it, sir, very hard to leave them alone.
I think it's time to leave it. I always, our board members, take out your share of advice, all the time here, all the serious advice.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there is not an address or phone number or email at all. Just that. Can you give that to us, please? Nice.
Next is Robert Williams. Mr. Williams?
Board Member, my name is Robert Williams. I'm from Fallston. Adam I want to speak about is this Cleveland County Board of Education resolution regarding this twenty-five percent contract. I believe at the last meeting, one of our previous meetings, there was a pretty extended discussion of this twenty-five percent contract. And as I said right back there, listening to it, it appeared to me like it was a real good idea. And it was basically a statistical process control that's looking for a way to improve the quality of our teachers. That's what it looked to me like and I think that's exactly what it is. And I was kind of disturbed with our statement that we were gonna drag our feet on that. I think this is the law of the land. Each and every one of you board members took an oath to uphold the laws of the United States and North Carolina. And I think what we need to do is try to implement this law fairly. As I look through the resolution, I see some things where we want the money, but we don't wanna do the, do the work. Well, that's, I think, I think the best thing I can say about that is that's what bureaucrats do. They want the money, but they don't wanna do the work. And I think we ought to get around that and start digging in and try to make Cleveland County schools a better place to learn and improve teacher quality. And this twenty-five percent contract looks like a way to start doing that. It's not, it's only a start. It's only the first step. It's not the whole thing in one place. And as far as the statistics of the process go, I know the three-minute limit is hard to make a statement about a statistical process. So if anybody has any questions after the meeting, I'd be glad to explain my understanding of what the General Assembly is trying to do. But what I would like each and every one of you board members to do is take this resolution off the, off the tape. Try to make this twenty-five percent contract work. Try to make Cleveland County School a better school system. Try to make our teaching staff a more quality teaching staff. And the General Assembly is offering ten million dollars statewide. That's a hundred thousand dollars for Cleveland County. Divide it all out equally. So it looks like we've got a hundred thousand dollars to put into our teachers' payment and I'm sure that's not a bad. So my recommendations, take this off the table and get back to the basics of teaching. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next is Robert Queen.
Mr. Chairman, board members. I received a letter from you dated February eighteenth denying my request to be put on the agenda for tonight's meeting. You indicated that the school system does not have the resources to answer my questions because doing so would pull the staff away from the students. Secondly, you stated that the board was not legally obligated to answer any questions other than requests for public records. And lastly, you said that the school system was not in any way attempting to keep its physical operations secret because records are available in the public, financial audits are available online, and the board meetings are open to the public. I had a response ready for your three reasons, but I think the words of two of interested little teachers expressed it better than I can. Yesterday, my wife asked two teacher friends why they didn't attend board meetings. One of the teachers said that it was very apparent to the, very apparent that the administration board did not wanna hear from them, so they just didn't go to the trouble of attending. The second teacher.
The second teacher sent a text that I'm quoting from. He said, "Look, lots of money is wasted hot up and it's completely kidding. Walked into beautiful Newbury County office and checked out all the new furniture, new flooring and new computers, two to three per office. Didn't come to my room, but filled in wrong old ceiling and computers from two thousand two and chairs and desks when I went to school there and they threw. That's sad, but at least the county office had it somewhere." That's the end, board. There's an old saying in the military circles that a true citizen offers to be black. That apparently doesn't hold true in the school system. There's absolutely no excuse for students seeking to set their brand, withhold the guilty while understanding the significance of what is standing on this bill. Whether you guys want to admit it or not, you had a finish problem with teachers, parents, taxpayers, Cleveland County. Maybe not all, but certainly some bits of the same. That's why I submitted questions to you, gave you an opportunity to explain yourself. For whatever reason, you refused to respond with anything other than talking documents. You should understand that your refusal to answer did not make the question, because those asked could go away. They only answered their result. May it be known that you were given ample opportunity to answer legitimate questions about the operations and signatures of the board and school system except to do here and forth. And I'm requesting that the copy of our warrants be added to the board memo.
Thank you for your time. Now back to our... Now back, I'm sorry, I'll try to talk louder. Now back to our approval of minutes. This time of the February tenth meeting. What's the pleasure, the board?
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes on February tenth meeting business session.
Is there a second?
Aye.
They've moved it seconded to approve the minutes of February tenth business session. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as unanimously. On to approval or consideration of minutes of February eleventh, two thousand fourteen called session. Superintendent Surge, what's the pleasure, board? They've moved it seconded to approve the minutes of February eleventh called session. Surge, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as unanimously. Thank you all. On to locally competitive students. First prepared from Cleveland County Promise Group. Chair?
Hi. Um, I had a meeting with Dr. Bowles today regarding some of the fundraising logistics for our grassroots links to learning, LOM program. And just to go over some of the details of it with him so that I can understand what your role, his role, and the principal's role is in approving this sort of thing. And so you should have in your board docs just a bullet list of some items. And basically, it's just a completely voluntary, I'll be meeting with each principal individually. Dr. Bowles tells me that this type of thing doesn't necessarily need approval above the principals themselves. And it's basically just a good old-fashioned donation drive. Nothing real fancy about it. It's the same thing I would've done when I was in high school for a fundraiser. There will also be more literature available, pamphlets and flyers and that sort of thing available in the schools themselves and with the councils. We're gonna have the literature for any parents that have questions. We're also gonna be having town hall meetings for all of the high schools so parents can come. And it's probably gonna be at high school, but we certainly would've, you know, any parent or student that wanna come can keep your information about that. That's, and the progress of the fundraising will be reported on a weekly basis through our website and also through the star, just to keep everybody abreast of what's going on. That's been it. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for the board? For town hall meetings, are they held in the evenings or in the construction plant?
In the evenings. Right now, the only one that I've nailed down is one for a small homeschool group, but I wanted to see if I could get, with the principals, to see maybe I could get a lunchroom or an auditorium in the evening when there's not, oh, basketball game or baseball game or any, any kind of thing like that going on. Just an opportunity. And I'm always available. I've already set up some meetings in workplaces where the HR manager or the plant manager wants me to speak to their employees that have high school-aged children. So hopefully, I'll be able to cover all that if they're not able to come to an evening town hall meeting.
I believe this board feels otherwise, that you have gone over that. Dr. Bowles is, is free to accept yourself. Is the board wishing to do anything different? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, I'll link Dr. Fisher. You can give some update on Read to a Team.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the board, Dr. Bowles, I appreciate the opportunity to update you on Read to a Team. If you remember, about a month ago, I spoke to you in reference to a letter that we were submitting with some waiver options for Read to a Team. And we did that. We submitted that. And as I talked to you that night, we've had some updates that continue to come. We were in Greensboro as of late Friday and heard some, some updates. And I wanted to just provide, spend a few minutes this evening, give you some updates, keep you informed of what's going on, and then ask you for some, some action at your next board meeting. I know the information I provided in the board docs was extensive. There were lots of, lots of documents there, lots of information there. So I tried to summarize some of this information. to summarize some of this information. I put it at your places for this evening. So those five bullets, we'll go through pretty quickly here. First of all, if you remember in the letter that we wrote, we had three waiver options. And two of those waiver options were, we got, Dr. Bowles and I got a call, I believe I even expressed that that evening, that some of those were really, our waiver options were waiting people on. And those would need to be sent to the General Assembly. And point number one there, there have been six recommendations made to the Joint Legislative Commission about the Read to Achieve law. Just real quickly, and I can answer these questions this evening, or you can feel free to call. Call me or call Donna Center. We'd be glad to explain these more in depth with you. But if you remember, one of the waivers we asked for is the reduction of the number of required passages. And that's one of the things that our state superintendent has taken to that commission to reduce the number of required passages. And remember, another thing we asked for was some flexibility in summer camp. And that also evidently was either asked for by other districts or thought it was a good idea. So that's been taken to the joint commission there. Other things have been taken is to extend the funding for K-2 summer interventions, which we, again, we recognize, if we're going to assess third grade reading, we have to do a lot of work in K-2. Promotion decisions, if you remember that law, really, at the end of the law, at the end of the extensive process, it gives a superintendent the right. And some of this proposed changes will give that back to the principal, provides consistency between charter and public schools, and it offers some, you know, some of the proposed changes, some clarification for exceptional children. Those things have not been approved. We don't know exact timeframe of when that will go to the state or go to the joint commission. But those things are out there. Folks are talking about them, and we may see some changes to the legislation for Read to Achieve. But so some significant things have changed and really made our teachers a lot happier and our administrators happier. We've got some elementary administrators in the building tonight, and I know in meeting with them provides some relief. If you look at point number two, in the past, remember, students had to make an 80 percent of the information we had in the past, when students had to score an 80 percent on each of three benchmarks for a standard, each or three portfolio assessments for a standard. Well, that's been revised. The law actually says 70 percent. And what we were led to believe is you had to count each one of those individually, five questions, four out of five would be the 80 percent. So I think that's where that's come from. But what's being said now is we can use those three passages for each standard and use that as a cumulative score. So, you know, I give you the example, if a student, you know, has three passages and made this 15 questions, they score 11 out of 15. That gets them above the 7 percent, and that allows them to complete that standard. So that really does provide some flexibility for our students. And we see a lot of our students being successful with that way. Having scored those passages individually is very difficult. So if a student does, you know, does not as well on one of those passages, but does well on some others, they're able to have those together. So that's really, that's really when I met with principals and our curriculum folks at elementary level, they were very excited about that. One of the things also that you heard about was frustration, I believe. I know Chris Harris was in the group at Bulling Springs, and I know some of you other board members were, I'm not sure who was in that group. But what we heard from teachers were they were frustrated because they couldn't go back and teach from these passages. You know, they, any good teacher understands that form of assessment. You give that form of assessment, you get back and teach from it. But now we have the flexibility to do that. If this was my third grade classroom, I could give you a portfolio, we'd take it, take it up, assess it. And if I could give it back to you, we could teach from it. We could learn from Mr. Harris' mistakes. We can understand why Ms. Miller chose B and got all the answers right. So that's a real big thing for our teachers to be able to use that, which enables the time that we're spending on doing these portfolio assessments. Now we're able to really impact and improve instructions. Our teachers and administrators, I believe, were excited about that. Also, the responses may be shared with parents, and that's been changed. Now the parents can come in and say, "Where my child's at? What are they missing? What do I need to help them with at home?" I know I've got folks that I've communicated with that were frustrated at the beginning about, "I don't even know what my child's missing. I can't see him. I can't do those things." But now they have an opportunity. Number four, good cause exemptions included now are, included are extent one and extent two. In the past, those were not included. So if you're familiar with that, exceptional children's terminology, we can include those students with good cause exemptions. So that's made a good thing. And the diffusing is we, the main point of our waiver that night was to look at an alternate assessment to be able to use to meet the requirements of Read to Achieve. If you remember, our district asked to be able to use Reading 3D. That was approved. And, but we needed, a few other things needed happened for that for final approval. While that was approved, and I think, Dr. Bowles, you may have the exact number, but I believe there were 12 or 13 districts that submitted some things. And all of those things were approved. We have to send in a statement that we verify that, and I'll read to you, a statement verifying the request of alternative assessment is a valid and reliable standardized assessment of reading comprehension and demonstrates that the student is reading at or above the third grade levels required by the Read to Achieve law. And the documentation I provided you, if you look at those attachments two, three, and four, really gives us, in what we believe, ample documentation that Reading 3D does that. If you, the second page that I gave you just is the waiver options. And I just cut and pasted that from our original letter, so you're familiar with what we asked for. And what we asked, if we're members, I know I've given you this information, a lot of information. But what we're going to ask, and we'll come back to you on March 10th, I've given you a draft of a letter that we would ask for your approval so that we could officially use Reading 3D as an alternate assessment in Cleveland County schools as students scoring above a P would be considered to demonstrate master reading comprehension. So with that information, I'll be glad to answer any questions I can tonight. Or we will come back to you on March 10th. It'll be time to look over the documentation, that letter, and I'll be glad, Donna and I, if you want to be glad to answer any questions tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Did I understand you to say that other districts are also using the Read 3D as well as Cleveland County school?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. Basically, in the, most of the passes, anything that was passed, any district could use. And if there are other districts wanting to use it.
Do we, do you have the leg to get a reply from Dr. Harris before, I know they're already using Read 3D 3D, but they'll just continue on?
Yes, ma'am. They'll continue on. And that ended your assessment, we're going to give that end of the year assessment regardless. We have to use Reading 3D anyway. This will be an avenue if students don't have a portfolio done, if they don't pass the EOG, this will be another safety that they're, if they are efficient, if they're a level P, they will have to go somewhere else. Ms. Guthrie, Carolyn Guthrie, a DPI consultant, basically, her information to me was, your board passes this, your board chairman signs it, it's going to be approved, and you've got that option. They're going to approve these options. But we have to have a board approval.
We could use the Reading 3D as the sole assessment?
It wouldn't be the sole assessment, Mr. Harris. It would be an assessment that after, if a student did do the portfolio, actively portfolio, didn't make the necessary score in the beginning of grade, didn't make the necessary score to end the grade, but on their TRC or Reading 3D, if they scored a P on that, which would be grade level efficient, then we would use that as the standard for them on that to go to certain areas.
And they've already approved that on the P D.
That's correct.
And it may just be a typo there. Don't know. It just won't be clear that the North County extent one and extent two, it says included not.
Okay, they are included, yes. They are, they're a good cause exemption. That means they're exempt from having passed that. It originally was just extent one, but now it's extent one and extensive. And if you remember, part of the exceptional children clarification, they've asked for some additional flexibility with these students. But at this point, it's just extent one and extensive.
Mr. Chairman, comments.
I just wanted to comment with respect to the state board meeting on February 14th respectively. There was a lot of discussion, I think, the Read to Achieve, because it took a lot of time. I was somewhat informed, somewhat of the newest assessments that were, I sort of read from most of the waivers that had been submitted, 13 and 15 that we noted. And seemed like the majority of them had, of course, a lot of them had 3D, but there were a lot of assessments that I didn't know existed by knowledge. It was very informative and educational for me. The other concerns that were discussed by some of the board members, you know, were the proliferation in their management testing. There was one for one. Some of the board members, and particularly the principal of the state superintendent, or national superintendent of the year, expressed a lot of concerns and frustration, particularly from the third grade teachers in terms of the workload and distracted from their instructional time. So I think the board was very sensitive to that. I'm also aware that the oversight committee and the legislative were not too kind with so many of the changes and recommendations. But they also received very well the recommendations from the advisory committee that sort of prelude the approvals of many of those waivers. So that was well received.
We're very sensitive to our third grade teachers. We've met with those teachers. We've listened to those teachers. We've met with our administrators. One of the things we did not want to do is add in the board testing. And Reading 3D is something that we're doing in classrooms. We're doing that. And so we had some options to add additional benchmarks and additional testing. But we felt like, you know, we were, you know, continuing to weigh a P, we were fat. And that wasn't our intention. We wanted to, we wanted to provide our teachers with a little bit of relief there. And also, I think a lot of that's come with the changes that's come with Read to Achieve, for those teachers to be able to use that portfolio as a teaching tool. It really seems to make our folks happy with it. So that's why we decided to stick with the Read 3D. I would say, it'd take, we were in Greensboro Thursday, Friday, and that was a large part of the conversation Friday with folks there. "What are you doing? I saw your letter." Cleveland County's letter was obviously gone to several places, and immediately they saw our letter, really liked the things we suggested. We've had some requests to send them some information because they wanted to.
It's a decent, they did reference your letter. I don't know why they picked Cleveland County. I think it was that a positive.
Okay, I hope so. Any other questions? If you've got questions over the next two weeks, feel free to call. Call me or call Donna. We'll try to answer those questions. If you've got questions in reference to Reading 3D, and then we will bring you, I've got a draft of that letter that we'd like to bring to the March 10th meeting. And then we'll present that at that time. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Fisher. Next item on the agenda is consideration of Cleveland County College President. This one's a little bit different as you've all read. Chairman Bill Tristain, Cleveland County College, and that. I'm making someone feel to have a complete term of, and you've all read the letter, and it's to us, Chris Turner, who was appointed to fill an expired term in 2010, do a new four-year term. Or is that other four-year term that ends this June 30th this year? What's the pleasure of the board?
Thank you, Chairman. Chris Turner, Cleveland County Board, as well as the Senate.
Second. Moved to Second to recommend Chris Turner to new four-year term. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any passes you announce. Thank you all. Next item on our agenda is NCAA teacher tenure information, which I believe Chris loves. Mr. Glover introduced himself earlier. I guess there, he's not really a guest, but happy to hear from you, Chris.
Thank you, Chairman Hammer. Chairman Hammer, board members, Dr. Bowles, distinguished guests, and my colleagues in the education profession behind me. I am Chris La, chemistry and AP environmental science teacher at Barnes High School and president of the Cleveland County Association of Educators. I'm here tonight along with Melinda Ben. She's a teacher at Turning Point Academy, and she is representing NCAA board of directors in Raleigh. I come before you this evening asking for you to approve a resolution calling for the General Assembly of North Carolina to repeal the legislation that involves the 25 percent educator contract. Melinda would first like to read the resolution in its entirety, and then I would like to speak to the resolution and its meaning to educators.
Cleveland County Board of Education Resolution. Whereas the Appropriations Act of 2013, session law 2013-36 SB 402, section 9.6, includes legislation that requires school boards to offer four-year contracts and bonuses to 25 percent of its teachers, 25 percent contract. And whereas school districts are finding it difficult to select a method of determining who qualifies for four-year contracts, and whereas school boards value their teachers and believe them to be deserving of adequate and equitable compensation, and whereas teachers have received only a 1.12 percent state salary increase once out of the past five years, resulting in the greater need by school districts to increase recruitment and retention of teachers. And whereas the Appropriations Act of 2013 cut funding for classroom teachers, teacher assistants, textbooks, instructional materials, and limited English proficiency while continuing the elimination of funding for mentor pay and professional development. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Education requests that the General Assembly allow it to retain its prorated share of the $10 million allocated for the 25 percent contract to be used for alternative pay or compensation for additional duties such as mentoring or leadership roles. And now, therefore, be it resolved further that the Cleveland County Board of Education urges the North Carolina General Assembly to repeal the 25 percent contract and develop a more effective, long-term compensation plan for teachers tied to career paths with input from the education and business community. Adopted this 24th day, February 2014, should you choose.
First of all, let me say, Ms. Wong, Dr. Bowles, I sincerely want to thank each of you for what you've done of working with teachers to make the best of this legislation. While there is no best way to deal with this issue, you have listened and responded to our concerns, and we are grateful for your work with us. To the school board, I want to thank each of you for all the things you have done for us in our classrooms with the limited resources the legislature has given. I never thought I would have to lobby Republican education in a state that is founded on a belief in Republican education. North Carolina's constitution clearly states that this state will maintain a uniform system of three public schools. Our leaders even decided we also need a public university for our citizens, and UNC became the first public university in the United States. Our 16-campus system has been a model for other state university systems. So where are we now in North Carolina? The legislature continues to slash funding for teachers, teacher assistants, classroom supplies, and textbooks. According to a story on National Public Radio, North Carolina is the first state to decide not to pay new teachers to earn an advanced degree in the United States. Can you imagine telling your doctor not to go back to school and gain more knowledge? Can would any of us actually tell our students that more education is not really what you need? No, not in the state of North Carolina. No, not in the state of North Carolina. There is an attack on public education, the likes of which I've never seen in my 24 years as a educator. Across this great state of North Carolina, NCAA and school boards are coming together, standing as one voice, and telling Raleigh, we have had enough. Newspapers such as the Charlotte Observer state the Bears teachers are torn up over giving up tenure for $500. The News and Observer, only in North Carolina could a possible pay raise become a nightmare for a teacher. The Washington Post, school board defies North Carolina state law of college and teacher tenure. And now quoting from the Guilford County Schools Resolution of February the 11th, 2014, which most of us have heard about on state and national news, they stated in order to consider the contract offer, in order to consider contract offer under the 25% mandate, teachers will not have sufficient information to make an informed decision when they are forced to decide whether to forfeit their vested property right to tenure, which was earned in good faith through dedicated service to the students of GCS in exchange for the four-year contract. A fundamental principle of contract law requires parties to know and to understand the bargain they are making, in quotes. Our association, NCAA, filed suit against the state of North Carolina this past December to stop the removal of career status from teachers who have earned this property right. A property right that is not true tenure like the university system, but a guaranteed right to a hearing before this school board and/or a hearing office before being dismissed. Administrators will still be offered this option, why not teachers? So what are other problems with this legislation do we see? I've heard legislators and the news media saying that the teachers who are chosen represent the top 25% or the best 25% of eligible teachers. Here's problem one. The word top or the word best is not in the legislation. I'll read the legislation. All superintendents shall review the performance and evaluation of all teachers who have been employed by the local board for at least three consecutive years. Based on these reviews, the superintendent shall identify and recommend to the local board 25% of those teachers employed by the local board for at least three consecutive years to be awarded four-year contracts beginning with the 2014, 2015 school year. The superintendent shall not recommend to the local board any teacher for a four-year contract unless that teacher has shown effectiveness as demonstrated by proficiency on the teacher evaluation instrument. So now we must take the list and not pile the list that we presented to you, the top 25% or the best 25%, just the selected 25. Problem two, could we still say they are truly the best 25% eligible teachers? Again, we need to understand the legislation. The word teachers is used generic in the legislation. It actually includes counselors, instructional resource teachers, and media specialists who are not evaluated on the teacher evaluation instrument, but on a different evaluation instrument. According to the Attorney General, the definition of teacher also includes social workers and others who are not teachers but are paid on the teacher's salary schedule. How can we compare teachers to each other, let alone with other employees from other specialty areas? I have what is known as an EVOs data effectiveness grade. My colleague Anne Goss, who's in the audience tonight, is a two-time Star Teacher Award recipient and whose students consistently receive superior ratings at the North Carolina State College. And she has no EVOs data or North Carolina final exam. The arts are just as important to students as the academic core. How do we compare teachers with test data to teachers without test data? Researchers have been asking this same question for decades, and our legislature wants us to solve the problem now. Problem three, the appropriation for this four-year contract has only been funded for one year. One might conclude that the intent of the legislature is to fund the contract for four years. Please let me inform you of the other intents of current and past legislatures. ABC bonuses for expected or high growth were supposed to give teachers and teacher assistants raises for each year school shows growth. ABC legislation remained, raises were withdrawn for lack of funding. Mentor pay, for each of your first two years of being a mentor, you will receive mentor pay. Mentor requirement stays, pay removed due to lack of funding. Intent of the legislature was to have less testing. We now have more state testing than we've ever had. So when it comes to a contract, intent will simply not cut it. Is it funded for four years or not? A simple question. I've asked the question to two members of the legislature. I have the emails here, I have received no response. It's a simple yes or no for a very important component of the contract. The question could not get any easier. Is it funded for four years? Yes or no? If appropriations have not been made, then how can this contract even be offered? I can imagine signing a mortgage contract with a bank. I can pay you the first year, and I intend to pay you for the rest of the contract. Problem four, the state evaluation system of teachers. Let's say if the final educator chosen is educator 301. Is educator 301 really much different from educator 302 or 399 for that matter? This is a problem around the state because of this evaluation instrument and its subjectivity. For example, evaluation and ethics, element one D on the evaluation instrument. Teachers demonstrate high ethical standards. An administrator or team of administrators is to make this call. You are either ethical or you're not ethical. If we say teachers demonstrate high ethical standards, is there really a development, proficient, accomplished, distinguished area of ethics? Who can possibly make that judgment call? And yet this evaluation instrument is calling on administrators to do that. You can't be a little ethical. So how can we have four degrees of that ethical behavior? Element two D, teachers embrace diversity in the school community and the world. You either embrace diversity or you don't. There's no development, no proficient, no accomplished, no distinguished, you either are or don't. That's what teachers are having to deal with, with this evaluation instrument. So after this list is published, based partly on this teacher evaluation instrument, how can we really tell educator 302 why they weren't chosen? So here at the end of our request for your approval, I'd like you to see a trend that we as teachers see with the legislature. A few years ago, they decided that we're not going to pay teachers and teacher assistants and all of them. Mortgages, college loans, car payments still had to be paid. The legislature decided to reverse the legislation. The legislature wanted to stop NCAA from using deduction from payroll and single us out. I told one of our legislators, you can't single out one organization and not the others. He assured me they could. I have no law degree, but it seems that usually doesn't work well in our country when you can read legislation that's that easy. The court stopped that legislation. A voucher bill was quickly passed in legislature this past session. The court has now placed an injunction on the legislation. Governor McCorry on NPR stated, one feedback that I get from teachers is, will you respect us? Will you show us some respect? Says McCorry. They just feel like they're locked over, and no one likes to work for a company where they're just taken for granted. And a lot of teachers feel like they are taken for granted at this point in time. So Governor and North Carolina Legislature, we want our full-time teacher, we want our full-time teacher assistants back. We want our calendars back under our local control. We want textbooks, print or digital. Can you imagine telling a college professor you're not going to buy the textbook because they cost too much? And if you're going to require us to test here in the last five days, is it really too much to ask that we get the scores back within two days? We have a little thing called validating for it, saluting for it, and graduation. We need them. And lastly, repeal this 25% mandated contract legislation. As Dr. Martin Luther King said many years ago, our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter. And I must say, these things you have heard this evening, to all of us involved in the education of our future students, they matter to us. I thank you for your time. Board members, let us all stand united together tonight and ask for your approval of this legislation. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if one would, before we begin discussion, our seniors have been here for some time, if you don't mind, we can excuse them for, if there's not a moment to get any stead.
Thank you all. I would be pleased to make a motion to adopt the Cleveland County Board of Education teacher tenure resolution as presented by Mr. Glover, who actually does a wonderful job. And I'd like to second, and also thank you very much.
Move to second that we, and I'm just ready to, and I continue the package so well at this point, I can honor without Mr. Glover. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a amendment. It's a small amendment, but I think it makes something a little more clear. In the third, whereas, in the third paragraph, it currently reads, "School boards value their teachers and believe them to be deserving of adequate and equitable compensation." I'd like to substitute the word all in a couple places. School boards value all of their teachers and believe them all to be deserving of adequate and equitable compensation. The key issue that the General Assembly has put forth is that they're valuing 25% of our teachers and all of them. I think grammatically that doesn't change the intent of the amendment, but I believe it makes it more clear that we recognize and value all of our teachers, not just a squating 25%. So I move the amendment.
I believe that has to be okay.
It has to be a second, and then you have to vote on the amendment.
Not second. The recommended amendment to the resolution.
Move to second that this amendment be approved, and we'll have to vote later on the motion, but the vote on the amendment start off. So any discussion on the amendment? If not, all in favor of the amendment as proposed by Mr. Harrison, Chris, and all in two places.
So the school boards value all their teachers and believe them all to be deserving of that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Asses you may. Now on to the original motion as I believe made by, as laws were seconded by, Mr. Miller.
I have a question to ask Mr. Glover, I guess, that Mr. Glover. Is this same resolution being presented by NCAA members across the state to their local boards?
Yes, it is.
Is it identical to?
It's been asked by several boards.
I was going to ask if you knew how many.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say I could not go any further without saying thank you for your kind words, and it was very powerful. I think it was very brave of you to do, and I think it's very brave of us as a board to take a stand in a stance like this. And I'm reminded of the quote, as you reminded me when you spoke, you know, being a staff or something, or anything, so I'm very proud of this tonight.
I'm a fan for every teacher and every teacher's assistant, if you will. But I don't feel like that we should have taken an hour away from our teacher's assistance even at this moment. We should have made some way of working it out, let that hour with them, and then stretch it out more if we could.
Comments on the resolution itself? Yes, sir.
I strongly support the features of this. I think it's something we need to stand for. The Guilford County, you mentioned the Board of Education resolution that they have involving the great likelihood of legal action coming out. If this, if we go forward with it, this would be a way that we, that the state could avoid some serious legal procedures and perhaps our board also as part of that, avoid some legal action. I think the action is warranted. I think we need to be supporting our teachers and all that they do, and I would like to vote our support of this resolution.
Comments on favor, I'm sorry. I just wanted to respond to much of the data that Mr. Glover shared, and I was curious and if you could, you know, maybe qualify this statement, but there was a recent study that talked about the percentage of teachers across the state who were above, who performances was low and above proficiency, and it noted 75% of the teachers across the state. And many of our local districts, ALAs, were pretty much in line with those data's give or take. So with that rationale, then I, it's difficult to understand the justification that we, that the legislature proposed the 25% contract. So what happens to the other 50% that are also equally qualified or, you know, that kind of recognition? So I just wanted to stay there because again, they're just out of line in terms of how do we properly recognize that that's a true name is charred in the middle of the decision on 25%. That sounds like Twitter first century discrimination. But even that's just not a common question. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say, you know, they went through this fairly quick while it just passed through, and at the time the state is in, financially, this did not save any money to the state at all. This was pretty much a tax on public education and our teachers in North Carolina. That's all it was, which is not the correct thing to do. It's probably an unbelievable amount of time that our staff here at the county office has spent on this, one law that they've passed, where they keep on giving us a hard time about cutting down central office staff, but they put more duties on the central office staff to do something that's not going to be very popular once it comes out, and the results of that's going to come out. So I think it's a very bad law, as we all know, and we all agree. I appreciate your comments. I think it would be very good to go to Raleigh and let them all hear those comments that you, that you said, and I support them.
Any other? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Asses you may. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Glover.
Mr. Chair, I have to thank the Department of Defense for this night. I think it's good for us, we as a board, as the Guilford County.
I think it's good for the board, uh, we as a board, um, as the Gilbert County. I give a standing ovation for our teachers, our teacher assistants, and administrators, and appreciation, and also simply that we stand behind them in this process and we stand with them. Can we, as a board, give a standing ovation to our students?
Next time, agenda is personnel report that you all had in your packet. What's the pleasure, Paul?
I make a motion, we approve the personnel report recommended by superintendent.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the personnel report recommended by superintendent. Any discussion?
Uh, I have a question. Probably he didn't summon that personnel report and said that he was hoping to retire. He didn't want to retire.
I believe, uh, explaining that that's a personnel discussion that we should carry out in our book.
Okay.
I believe, probably a problem to approach that is to ask the question of administration before we. Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Lee, I believe you're going to talk to us about budget amendment and school bus authorization.
Mr. Chairman, as the board, Dr. Bolz, you had in your packet, the second budget amendment for the year. This amendment is primarily positional, but, uh, particularly in the local current expense fund and state fund, uh, is still primarily, uh, positional for the end of year. But the large additional revenue resource out there in that minimum fund here, primarily because additional revenues are, uh, non-structural supplies, school technology, the Indian Gaming Fund, digital learning, children's special needs, school resource officer to be grant, transportation, additional fuel adjustment, school connectivity. Those are the primary divisions right there in the state public school fund. In the federal grant fund, there's some additional revenue there. There were carrier budgets, uh, monies that were multi-year, but not expended during the prior year. And then all the rest, I guess, I'll feel that you know, if you're out, you tend to follow that. Things would be wonderful if you had a fairness grade, and I think you have in front of you questions that you may have.
Or if you have any questions, Mr. Lee? If not, what's the pleasure of the board? I believe it would be progress presented. It's been moved and seconded that the amendment be approved as presented by Mr. Lee. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. On to replacements, uh, school buses authorization.
Mr. Chairman, as we've done in the previous years, that we have been allocated additional replacement buses from the state, uh, we have brought this information to you having your packet, a memo of the state detailing the process. You have a list of 14 proposed buses that we would like purchased. We have copies of the requisitions in there that are actually requests to make a purchase. They are not a purchase order yet. Pursuant to your policies requiring board approval or any purchase order, assuming a hundred dollars dollar to respect the request that you approved this, the requisition that we were determining purchase orders. We will bring them back to you at some point in time. Always in the years past, we've had the financing arrangement in place at the same time that we had the purchase order. The state does not have the financing done yet. And whenever that is complete, that is whenever the purchase order will be released from the state to the actual vendors. But, uh, it's just a little different process than it's been in the past. We will have to come back to you with your final approval to accept that financing agreement whenever it is approved by the state.
So we're only approving the base price then?
You're approving the base price and ultimately the state will apply these, these units of VSS to the base price. They will include some financing charged in those final degree.
Any questions, Mr. Lee?
I've got a question. Uh, just notice that the state, did the state make the allocation that we were going to get six of the Thomas buses and eight of the international buses?
No, that was, uh, Transportation Department, uh, choice. And up until four or five years ago, the state always selected one vendor for school buses. And that's what you got. And four or five years ago, they started selecting multiple vendors. You could choose the vendor that you wanted to have. And Transportation Department around the state had some issues with the Thomas field. Some of the people did, they felt that, uh, there were some issues that just hung up quality that most Transportation Departments were looking for. Uh, our Transportation Department directors around the state have worked with Thomas field. That issue been resolved, and that's the reason our guys want to look at both vendors in this process.
Second question, uh, how old are our buses before their replacement?
Well, the legislation as it is right now, it can go 250,000 miles for 20 years.
So we've got 20-year-old school buses out there now?
I don't think that we have any 20-year-old buses for the future.
Grand too.
We will see.
You might not be answering this question, but the new buses are coming out. Do you think part of the, uh, the process for camera already is all of these students now? Also, do you think?
It's likely that they are not.
But that's connected to future?
Those adjustments, yes.
Other questions? What's the pleasure, Paul?
Make a motion to accept. I guess we're approving not the purchase order, but yeah, we are, right?
It's a million for them. I just have to create a purchase order. And I don't have the comfort of creating them there. Their board policy tells me to have a hundred thousand dollar approval, even though we're going to send this purchase order to, to the state. And they're not going to turn it into an actual purchase order to the vendor until the financing is, is in place. I don't feel as though we can do anything except be entirely within your guidelines. So, uh, this, this request to produce a purchase order that we can send to the Department of Public Instruction and that would do with theirs.
Can I make a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. So thank you, Mr. Lee. On now, Mr. Yarborough is going to talk to us about capital projects.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. I only have a couple newly encumbered projects since our last report. These are dealing with security upgrades. We'll highlight just a few other projects. Kings Mountain High School, we did install a stormwater drainage, uh, really associated with the new field house. At Kings Mountain High School, uh, we're able to get in, we did coordinate this with Mr. Hall. Contractor there for that project to get in and put this height underground to an existing catch basin before they actually tore the sidewalks. Uh, we have completed the restroom partition replacement project that really involved four elementary schools that's ground, Grover, James Love, and West. Uh, Morgan Theatrical scheduled to replace the curbs at Barnes Observatory, building at the 10th. Uh, just a couple other that's, uh, Kings Mountain Fire Department has scheduled to burn the house in property at West Elementary on March the 3rd. They plan to do that at school hours. Town Brooker is starting to cover, replacing the project there on Goldwood behind Grover. Uh, they've actually put in the temporary prime, so the access to our 3K classroom, there's no issue with that. Uh, we'll share that also as part of that project is a sewer line and a water line that have to be relocated as they change out this cover. Have spoken with Town Brooker as well as the contractor on site. They do plan to work around our school schedule if they have to shut off the water. Uh, hopefully this cover will be in this week. I also want to make you aware of a pre-bid scheduled for the softball rest facility at Kings Mountain High School. We have scheduled that from March the 11th to Tuesday at 2:30 here at the Stat Development Center. That will be pre-bid for that project. The bid opens will be about two weeks later on March 25th. And Tuesday at 2:30 here at Stat Development. And I plan to, I hope to be able to bring you that project to the April 14th for these specific questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions about the project here, but there's a sound system in this room. Seems like every meeting, there's an issue. Is it possible to have somebody come in and have some expertise and tell us what we can do to get the sound system in the solitary room?
Uh, Mr. Harris, we've got a plan in, in, in progress. Uh, we feel like it's initiated through this wireless line here. The lines that you have are hardwired, this is wireless. And I think we have to adjust this, uh, point if it passes. Our plan is to come in and replace the hardwire here.
That's how you guys are working.
Wow, that's, that's planned out, sir.
Do you have a conclusion date on that?
Here you go, Eric.
Thank you, Mark. I hear you. Oh, that's your answer? Thank you for hearing me. I understand that you're embarrassed. Next is, uh, some information that everybody's been waiting for. You can make a case, I call it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think some of our teachers just stated that this, I think, may be as important to them as the 25%. And I understand that. Uh, it seems to have been very important as I've visited the schools and been out in the community with these work last few weeks. And, uh, folks that work with us, that we work together on these weather calls, understand that I don't make predictions about the weather, I make observations. So I'm not going to make any predictions tonight about the weather because that sometimes kind of jinx, kind of jinx us. But I prepared, prepared for you, uh, just an overview of where we are in terms of climate weather. And I included on there both our late arrivals and our days missed due to climate weather. Uh, this is always a complicated matter because we have to both look at student days and then we have to look at stats of employees on those days when they are not working, whether they're taking annual leave and are going to exchange an annual leave for an annual, annual leave or, um, and so that sometimes directs the decision we make. First, of course, is our concern for safety, but then sometimes we may say 10-month employee is not allowed to work because we know they're going to have to exchange that for a day later on that would be an optional day. So won't go into that later that point, but just to let you know that it is a complicated matter. So I want to go through, uh, really what we have and where we are at this point and make a recommendation too. We have enclosed, as you can see, for students, staff, and for student team staff in some fashion on the days of Wednesday, January 29th, January 30th. It's enclosed on February 12th, 13th, and 14th. And you had designated in your calendar some backup days as you typically will do, as you're required to do. And I have those there for you. Those days were May 26th, which is Memorial Day. You had January, January 21st, which was at semester break. And, uh, incidentally, that is not an option for us because we pass that day before, as you can see, before we miss our first day of school. And so that leaves us with three additional days, spring break days, Jan-, uh, April 23rd, 24th, and 25th. Uh, back up to the top chart, you'll see what would be the case if you do nothing. And that would be, uh, really a couple of things. First, first January 29th day, take May 26th. And I'll jump down to February 12th, 13th, and 14th. And because of the way those were taken, those would be the 23rd, 24th, 25th of April if we do anything, nothing, because that would be an annual leave or annual leave. And then beyond that, we still are short a day. And March 28th was designated in the calendar, which we provided for you as a planning day at the end of the quarter, which is helpful for our teachers. But, uh, that is a day that we think now needs to become a student day. And we exchange an optional planning for the optional planning that we had on January 30th. So with all that said, that leaves you with some options that we would recommend to you for your consideration. And I recommend one of them as the preferred option, I think, from executive staff. The first would be to extend the school year into June and to the 9th and 10th of June, which are now teacher planning days. Uh, that would be after graduation, so that would require seniors, unless you went to move graduation, that would require seniors to bank some days before graduation. Uh, that would seriously complicate testing, which I think was alluded to earlier by Dr. Fisher, Mr. Glover, someone, uh, mentioned about the testing calendar. And now we have to test in the last five, five days for secondary schools. And that would really complicate the matter of testing for our seniors, in particular, of all students. Uh, that only accounts for two, two days. So that would be Friday, April 25th as a school day. But obviously you all realize that it's not preferable to come to school one day with. The second option would be to exclusively use Saturdays for the three days. Uh, we know this would be a significant cost in overtime because Saturday, uh, attendance would mean that all of our non-certified people would be on time at half. And so even were we to make that a day when we tried every option that we had and reduced our staffing as we could, we still know that that would be a couple hundred thousand plus to be able to do those three days. The third option, which some systems are going forward, uh, would be to add an hour per day. And because of the need to make up three days, that would require adding an hour per day. And it would take six days in that scenario to make up one day. And so in order to make up, um, the time we've missed, six days and a part of another, it would require 21 days to make up an April 23rd, 24th, and 25th. So that would essentially be about 20 days in a month. That would be essentially a month of March if we were to do that. The fourth option would be a combination of Saturdays, additional hours, and/or June 9th and 14th. Again, complicating after the graduation. And finally, uh, the fifth option, which we think is probably the preferred option, is to eliminate our early release for parent conferences on March the 13th and our early release on the last day of school, June the 6th, like those school days. We would still, uh, plan to have parent conferences on those days, uh, on March 13th day, but we would just not be able to begin quite as early as our teachers were stable, seven o'clock those days anyway. And so we would just not be able to have our parent conferences quite as early beginning to. We would not be able to have it until April 3rd, or some, some get, begins early on the 3rd. Then go to school on Saturday, March 15th, 8 to 2. And then use accumulated hours. We, you remember the legislation changed a couple of years ago and then it's solidified this last year that you have the option of 185 days or 1,025 hours. We exceed the 1,025 hours. And so we would propose that we use some of those excess hours for that third day. The reason we're not proposing to use all three days and use accumulated hours for all three days is we believe that cuts us a little too close. We're not really, uh, I got a lot of calls after the early, after the January days and just wanting to know what was going to be about the calendar. And I, I predicted it because this is my last year baking these calls, that we would have our worst weather that we've had in a long time. have our worst weather than we've had in a long time. It turned out to be right. But I predicted we would miss some other days based on some of the poor deaths that were out there. And, and we're not certain that we won't miss additional days. Some of our worst snow has been in March, in March fifteen years ago. And so that would give us a little bit of cushion if we were to leave a few hours there to be preserved. I don't think it will hurt, it will be a little bit extra. I certainly don't want to cut us to the bone. Our teachers have a great deal of work to do. They're concerned about covering the curriculum and meeting the objectives and all of that. And so I don't want us to cut us too far to the bone. The other part of that recommendation is that we would then recommend, if that's the one you accept, or really regardless of the one you accept, we would recommend that you go ahead and designate May ten as an additional makeup day. That's another Saturday in the event that we need. We talked about making the March makeup Saturday a little sooner, and we feel like we need to give parents and teachers at least about three weeks to make those adjustments in their schedule. And then if we were to go ahead and make, make ten as a makeup day, then we would go ahead and take that to parents and students so that they would have plenty of time to get ready for that. So with all that said, I will say that our recommendation is option number five, and I'll be glad to answer your question.
Board members, you have any questions? Comments?
Well, just, just to be clear by mind, so we've got five days to back up, and our recommendation is May twenty-sixth for one, March twenty-eighth for two, March fifteenth for three, and then the other two will be some hours.
I understand correctly, say it one more time.
May twenty-sixth for one of the days, March twenty-eighth for another day.
That's correct.
March fifteenth is Saturday for a third day, and then the remaining two will be some hours that we get to move other places. Is that accurate? Yes, you get it. Us staying all day when we're playing four days in the regulations. So it really is just three full makeup days.
And we could be some of the hours that we're going to, that we're going to lose by giving the, I guess we're giving you that, that part of the, the excessive two thousand and five hours. We could be some of that and make conference that in the last six months.
And like all board members, I've been doing this all weekend as well. That's going to keep us above the standard that the state has with a little bit of cushion and not a lot of cushion. Is that accurate?
And, and we'll analyze it. If we go on par, what I'm knowing is early release, if we start messing with a thousand and twenty-five hours, then if we were to have a late arrival or early release, then that begins to impact. And so we would need to look at that as it goes forward. If we miss additional days, we become in late, we go on early, what does that do to us in terms of that memo number?
At this time of year, with snows as good alternatives, no matter what we do to stake the calendar, there's going to be some discomfort. Not optimal days for learning when you have makeup days and you may not have good attendance. But I think option five is a, is a good, is, is a better choice than some of the others. I don't think they are any good choices relatively. Chairman, I would like it to, after we've discussed this, to make a suggestion of organizing these problems in the future. But I don't have issue at this time.
I would think so. There's a case, there's a case received. What's our question? If he makes, I don't think he makes a change with, makes a work session, what is that?
Work.
Work session.
That would be June nine. We did change.
I would try to respond to your reasons. Your recommendation suggestion that I felt like perhaps a work session would be maybe a first time.
The last part of your recommendation is that it is necessarily May the tenth if you make that day. There are some systems that say that if we miss a day in the middle of the week, we will make it up that Saturday next year to the overtime issue. I'm sure you've thought about that, and could you comment?
We have, and I'm always reluctant to do that, certainly in the calendar legislation, or actually it's not really the calendar, but it is where it says that if we take an annual leave day and it requires teachers to come on annual leave day, that we will give them for two days notice. This is not that, and that what you're serious on that. But I just think there's some common respect for our teachers, our parents, our students, and teachers, a little bit of notice. Most of our parents and students are going to try and come. We'll have some that have confidence on a Saturday, but they're going to try and get it with both the most. I think our focus is value, back to their children in school. I just, I believe that. And so I think if we can give them advanced notice, that's a good thing. I know some systems are doing that, and miss a Monday or Tuesday, they're going to come on Saturday. That eliminates the overtime issue if it's not giving people the opportunity to take the leave. And that really causes you to have to make that employee not come to work. And I, I just think that we're better off to give those time. And, and I think sort of this is fair for our families to give them that far, that man notice, that far advance that we can do. As we were talking about it, and I should have talked, we should have checked the systems in there. I know that's probably a problem that any high school principals probably, that problem that you are having today, but, I think, but it is what it is. I mean, we went down and found today that we thought was far enough out to be, uh, would be safe, hopefully having the snow in there. And that we thought would give us plenty of advanced notice, but would not get too close to the end of the year. A lot of thought went into that, but I just think it's hard for parents to make that adjustment on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, if they're going to go to school on Saturday. And they had... And, and selfishly, I think we could probably stand a chance to get a better attendance when it's far enough advanced to get the plan for it. So hopefully, if we miss another day in March, they'll have six, eight weeks to plan for that Saturday.
And I'm sure we'll mutate this with parents. Through website and phone.
We will, I expect it to be tweeted before you all.
I'm sure it's out there.
It's out there.
I saw somebody on the phone.
It's out there.
Yes, sir. We will do all we can to get this to our teachers and our students.
Dr. Boles, just to be clear, this will work on fast. When I answer the question, we will save spring break with this, right? You will save spring break? I thought that should have answered.
Somebody tweet that.
We're trying to control the narrative. Students and teachers would have the Friday, Easter Monday, and then what we, what we could designate at April eighteen and twenty-one through twenty-nine.
Or nine.
And, and, and that's a good point, good thing. I mean, we could be back here in, in two weeks. And I, I was nervous on Saturday, I don't know if you all saw on Saturday, there was some weather forecast that we have snow on Wednesday, this has since been removed. But somebody told me over the weekend that Auburn Act says we're going to have snow tomorrow. I told the brother, Auburn Act away. But at any rate, we could be back, we could be back discussing this again. But I think if that happens, and you still have to make spring break, you're going to have to make those days up. You're going to have to do it anyway, so we could at least make some happen.
Mr. Chairman, I have to say, my word, board members, if you'd like to put that out as a non-cure-all board, that if the General Assembly would remove the school calendar bill, we wouldn't even be talking about Saturday schools. We'd never be talking about issues of spring break. If they would give us the flexibility to do what we do best as a school board and quit trying to put us in this tiny little box and say, figure out how to do it in this tiny little box, if they would do away with the school calendar bill, it just limits us in so many places. It's, it's a trouble. Forces us to do things like having to go on Saturday and threaten spring break. That's not this board, that came out of the General Assembly.
Any further questions?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to make that?
Yes, sir. I make caution that we approve option five that was presented by the superintendent, which will make up school on May the twenty-sixth, May, excuse me, March the twenty-eighth, Saturday, March the fifteenth, and eliminate early release on March thirteenth and June sixth, and also use accumulating hours in excess of one thousand and twenty-five minutes for one day. And I further note that we designate Saturday, May the tenth, as a makeup day that's needed due to additional.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Mr. President. Thank you. On to the announcements. Could I have a...
Uh, for the members of the board that were here sixteen months ago when we first discussed the calendar, we discussed it in the county committee, that drew up the calendar for this year, uh, do remember a conversation with Ms. Bridges that, in which we talked about, I specifically asked her some questions about this Easter week and how it left us vulnerable if we ended up missing the days as it did. The calendar committee didn't think that it would happen, didn't think it would happen as those days get to happen, this number of days, and did not make any recommendations other than that we made up the days on the Easter break. And looking at the calendar, we've talked for the next two years, we haven't made any indication of made up days whatsoever for these next two years. And so I think we need to be looking ahead to the idea of what are we going to do in the future to avoid this last minute, having to make up days, leaving the public in suspense for, or what we're going to do with these makeup days. And if we're really not going to use the spring break to make up days, we need to come up with another plan. And what I would suggest is that at the next work session, uh, that we, director of staff should just give us some information about how we could change our calendar or modify our calendar or whatever, so that we do not have to go through this next year, or the next year with, with snow days being made up at the end of the year.
Comments? If not, I give you the suggestion. Any announcements, Dr. Boles?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We do have your, your calendar there, and I would just point out the up and coming events. We have several there, early March, the math day, which is the day after your next meeting, which is always a highlight for us, the robotics that week as well, and that's coming up in a couple of weeks. We do have several other events throughout the spring that you have here for you. I've pointed out in the past, the Teaching Excellence Award, particularly for and the seniors' golf banquet, so you'll just make sure you have those on your calendar. And I'd like to add one that I just learned about, that is tentative that you will kind of pencil it in and reserve this day to be contacted by the Touchdown Club at Kings Mountain. You know, they've been working on their project, they funded the fieldhouse construction project here at Kings Mountain High School, and they've set a tentative dedication day of May four. Can you take that forward? We'll hold that in the afternoon there. You'd like to be, uh, two o'clock afternoon, open house, you can take it.
Thank you, Dr. Boles. I think what we should say before we leave, that our next two meetings will start at six thirty for thirty minutes of comments, guardians, opinions, and recommendations, opinions about our new, who we should, what should be the qualifications of our new superintendent will be searched. That will be thirty minutes beginning of each meeting, and they will supplant our fifteen minutes in the middle of the meeting. Again, it will be three minutes of your comments. There will be no response, but we'll take them under advisement. If we have huge numbers and we can't accommodate, we'll consider it, but we ask anybody who speaks, depending on the number, they cut their comments to even less than three minutes so you won't cut other people's.
Dr. Hal.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe you were going to mention this, but in the meantime, I know the online survey has already been there available, like it's on our website. I think it's been already promoted in the store, but there is a survey for staff and then one for the community, and I encourage people, a lot of people don't like to spend up in that comments in public, and so they can just, in the privacy of their own home, they can take this survey. So I encourage people to do that.
I think we also said to the, 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 in the best of view of each of our meetings in March. That's essentially, March is the time. Finished on the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
There is.
Do you have something more to say that's on the agenda?
Well, we can talk for a minute.
Presenting an announcement.
I'd like to thank another committee, the Chris Mittles go along with Janitor, uh, over there, the Janitor, I went back by there again, so they do excellent work more than one time. It's, it seems like it's all the time. And Ms. Gold and the first day are, you could eat off a wall over there. That's how busy it is. And I'd like to really commend them for the job that they did.
So I believe there's a motion.
Motion, sir.
Second.
Any comments? If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's the command. I can go off the phone.